Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the Thursday, October 29 concurrent meeting with the City Council and the Bloomington Port Authority. I right now would like to call the City Council meeting to order and invite President Erickson to do the same with the Port Authority.
And I would like to call the Port Authority meeting to order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First order of business, I think we need to call the roll call of each of the organizations. So if we could call the roll, please, the City Council.
Councilmember Baloga.
Councilmember Baloga's absent today.
Okay. Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Coulter.
Present.
Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Martin.
I'm present.
Councilmember Nelson. And Mayor Bussi.
Present. We have three members of the City Council missing this evening, but we do have a quorum of the City Council with Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Coulter, Councilmember Martin, and myself in attendance.
And roll call for the Port Authority. Commissioner Bussi.
Present.
Commissioner Carter.
Present.
Commissioner Hunt.
Present.
Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Keller, I know you were there. Hey, we'll check back with you. Commissioner Luns. Go off mute, Rob.
Hello?
Yep, thank you.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Thank you. President Erickson.
Present.
And Commissioner Keller.
Commissioner Keller may have stepped away. He will not be participating until the last item.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we have a quorum for the Port Authority. We have six members present.
That's correct, President Erickson. So we could take up the first item of business on the port agenda, which is the approval of minutes.
So I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes.
Moved.
Seconded.
Was that Steve Peterson that second?
Carolyn, are you ready for a roll call?
Yes, who was the second? Oh, shoot, I'm on mute. Steve Peterson, were you the second?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Bussi.
Aye.
Commissioner Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Luns.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carolyn. Can you hear me now? Yes. Aye. I called in. It's Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thanks. So we have all seven commissioners present and voting in the motion minutes we're approving honestly. We'll turn it back to you, Shane.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item on the agenda is a City Council and Port Authority item. And with your consent, Mr. President and Mayor, I will just get right into it.
Very good.
Please.
Carolyn, can you make me the presenter and I will start a PowerPoint? Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody, for getting together tonight to consider the various documents and have a public hearing related to the SIC development. It's a project that the City and Port Authority have been working on for about two years now, actually. Obviously, COVID has affected a number of things, really as it relates to this project, it's only affected the timing. So I will go through some history with the Alpha and Interstate site. We'll do an overview of the SIC project, how we got here. We'll go through the agreements that are up for consideration tonight. We'll have a presentation by the SIC management group. Then we will have a public hearing. There is a public hearing that's needed for the Port Authority and for the City Council. Take testimony, close the public hearing, and then the Council and Port can consider action on the items here tonight.
Yeah, Shane, because I have to participate by phone, I would request that either you or Mayor Bussi, you know, identify anybody on the Port Authority that would have questions and so we can make sure that we recognize people.
Understood, President Erickson. We will help you out best we can here as we have questions and we'll call on folks as we go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. President Erickson knows all these slides fairly well anyway, and I know he has the packet in front of him, but is experiencing
I do.
Technical difficulties. I'll just say that so that it's on the record. So the South Loop Plan approved in 2013 to transform this dispersed suburban commercial area into a walkover neighborhood. You've seen this slide a fair amount in the past. The plan was approved back in 2013, and I will be discussing with other staff and planning and Port Authority members whether or not we should start work in the next year or so on updating the South Loop Plan. There are some obvious gaps in the plan now that it's seven plus years old, but this is the current mission statement for the South Loop Plan. To build on the district's unique mix of assets, transform the densities, accelerate development, make it a branded place, and do that as sustainably as possible. The Port Authority has delivered a number of projects to that goal. These are just the private development ones that we were involved in. There's another list that I keep that counts all the private development that has happened that we haven't been involved in and infrastructure. And we're well over a billion dollars worth of stuff that's happened out there since about 2013 when the plan was approved. So a lot has happened and more to come. Interstate and Alpha, the City and Port Authority got involved in the two sites in different ways. With the Alpha sites, which was four buildings on one parcel, which is now the Alpha A and B sites, as we call them, which have now been redeveloped, and I'll get into that in a second. In the Alpha Five site, we worked with the prior owner back in 2010 to acquire those sites for redevelopment and the extension of Lindau Lane. And so we did that, bought those sites, and then a few years later, the Interstate site was subject of a lawsuit between the MAC. Technically, the city was involved as well in the Interstate owners because of the North Tows runway that was put in. And through that settlement of that condemnation proceeding, the city became eventual owners of it. After a number of years where Interstate was a tenant and paid lease payments to the MAC and then a few payments to the city. Bottom line is, we ended up with that site as well. We operated the Alpha sites for a while, and then we sold those off for redevelopment with Alpha Five being the last building that we took down in the last couple of years. And Interstate has since moved part of their operations to other parts of the metro. They still do hold a presence in South Loop right next to the freeway. You probably see the sign occasionally as you look to the south. If you're traveling on the Eastbound lanes, you can see their headquarters building is still there in South Loop. So Alpha A and B now were flipped a little bit. North is to the left of this drawing. Town Place Suites was developed by Terratron, as well as the Alpha B site on the right with the AC by Marriott, the Element Hotel, the Hazelwood Restaurant, and the other retail spaces there. And with the Port Authority and City building a parking structure for that, called three parcel development there. Obviously, things are super challenging right now in the hotel world. The Element Hotel was the last piece of that that opened right before the pandemic hit, literally like a week or two. And we did lose the Grind Coffee Shop that was our standalone, non-chain coffee shop at the south end of that Hazelwood building. And we're looking at other options there. Obviously, restaurants and coffee is very challenged these days. These are just the renderings and final pictures of a few of those developments that happened on the Alpha A and B site. And then that led to the Alpha Five site. And so we had been working with a number of entities to market the site for various developments. We went as far as to create some drawings to market the site to some office users mostly and things like that. And how the site could be laid out with structured parking to make it as dense as we could. We had a rendering done for various reasons. This looks a little residentially, but the point is just to show density on the site and how that would fit in with the neighborhood. And really what we got, and this is all pre-pandemic, of course, was a lot of interest in hotel, select service hotel development on the site. There were a few other leads, and we had been working in particular with McGuff to market the site for a lot of different types of office use. And some of those would get traction and others wouldn't. But the primary interest was from select service hotel developers. And pre-pandemic, we studied these numbers constantly. In fact, I had a meeting on it earlier today. The occupancies pre-pandemic were still just stellar for Bloomington Hotels. Then the pandemic hit and everything changed. And so 2020, we're still projecting 9,700 hotel rooms in town, but I've kind of shaded that top end of that bar because there is discussion of converting some of those hotels either into residential uses or in some cases shelter use. And that is a moving target, and that's why I didn't put a specific number on that because we won't know the true impact of the pandemic on the hotel industry for a while yet. But the hotel industry will come back, but it was really strong before the pandemic. And obviously, now it's operating at about 30% of normal revenue. The site is challenged by height limits as well, and so you couldn't put a Radisson Blue or JW Marriott or Reflections condo tower on the site due to the airport height restrictions. It's about a 14-acre site. Actually, the site extends further this way. This was a drawing that we had created to square the site off. But it's about 14 acres, and it is limited to about 80 or 90 feet, depending on where you are on the site. It does have some environmental challenges as well. Interstate and the MAC and the City, when they struck the deal to purchase, call it the north portion, the Interstate parcels, the three parcels north of this red line. We knew there was some environmental contamination there, and when we did the demo, we discovered some more. It's been an ongoing negotiation with Interstate to get those bills paid by Interstate because part of the deal that was struck back when the sale to the City happened was that Interstate would be responsible for environmental contamination and cleanup. And we're in a position now where we've done all the cleanup that we are aware of to be able to build the SIC property and literally just a week or so away from invoicing Interstate for those final bills. And then we believe that we're done and SIC will be able to build that project without hitting anything new. But you just never know until you start digging, I suppose. The other thing that we discovered through the process here with SIC is that the site has a large Excel duct line. That's what this red line shows going through the site. So for the back lot line of the Alpha site here on the south and the south lot line of the three Interstate sites. And so that's a duct line that you can't build a building over. And so SIC had to, in some ways, reorient the buildings and how they were going to connect the Phase One building on the north to the stuff that's going to happen on the south half of the site, call it. And I'll get into that here in a second, a little bit with a better drawing. These aren't the actual contamination fields. This was in a little bit earlier drawing of what the contamination looked like, but I put it here because it kind of shows generally where that stuff was encountered. And so the City had been aware of SIC for a number of years through the Port Authority's involvement with the Foreign Trade Zone. They were a Foreign Trade Zone user in Bloomington. And then since it moved that Foreign Trade Zone, part of their operation to a building in south of the river that they had rented. And so I currently sit as the president of the Foreign Trade Zone in the metro. And so we knew that they were growing and doing well through our activities with that Foreign Trade Zone entity and had been in contact with them about a potential expansion in town, looking at their existing site. They own in southwest Bloomington, and there really isn't land to expand there. And so we had this site in South Loop, which SIC's plans and our plans for South Loop seemed to mesh up pretty well. The real issue is that the site isn't big enough for building what SIC wanted to do and surface park it. And so that's what we've done a lot in South Loop is to mitigate the cost of structured parking for projects. I mean, that started back in the late 80s and early 90s with Mall of America. You know, that project couldn't have been built while shouldering the cost of the structured parking. Same thing is true with lots of projects, including, for example, the Terratron project on Alpha B. If you want things dense, it costs structured parking in this area, can't support the cost of structured parking yet with the rents that you're going to get from various developments. And so this site's only 14 acres, and so it's got some other challenges. And that's why the City is involved in adjusting the land price and paying for parking, which is really what the Port and City are doing with this project. And so SIC is a German family name, and I'll let the SIC team go into their company background a little bit here in a few minutes. But really, what they're going to do is build this project in phases. So it's the first phase is single-story production and logistics. I'll call it the northeast parcel. Phase two is an office building, and this is really where Bloomington and the South Loop Plan really come into play. You know, we're very interested in the density and the headquarters office building that they would build in Phase Two. And Phase One is, you know, step in that direction, and then there's options and things like that that allow them to build the office later and us to build parking for that and share it with public use. Phase three is more production and logistics, and Phase Four is the second office building that would happen about 15 years later. So I know these are a little bit small, but northeast portion of the site, Phase One, large production and logistics facility. And we built some structured parking. I'll go back for a second. Structure, or excuse me, surface parking to accommodate that. SIC pays and builds for that. And then Phase Two comes along roughly three to five years from now, and they build the 100,000 square foot plus multi-story headquarters office building there. They connect it to the Phase One building with a breezeway that's built specially to accommodate the Excel line that runs along the old back lot lines of the parcel, but you can't put a building over that. So some additional engineering and design that has to accommodate that. And the Port Authority and the City build this parking ramp to accommodate the increased density there. And they go and build the additional building on the northeast side of the site, the Phase Three building. And then later on, they build more single-story high bay space in Phase Four along with the second office building, and we build parking for that if it's needed 15 years out. And so the whole site then is consumed by all those phases and the parking. And the Port Authority retains development rights to the parking should that parking need go away due to driverless cars or whatever. And if it doesn't, then we can use it when SIC isn't using it, but SIC gets right to it during the times of day that they need it. And we're, this is why I got messed up, but in March 18 of 2019, the Council and Port Authority passed motions directing staff to study the feasibility of the project. Exactly a year ago today, the Council and Port Authority passed a motion directing staff to execute a letter of intent, which we did, of course, after the October 29, 2019 meeting, and go forth and, you know, put the development agreements together reflecting what was in the LOI that was passed on October 29, 19. Then COVID, you know, we were working on that, and then, of course, COVID happened. And so now we are here a year later where the City Council and Port Authority would consider approval of the various agreements, have the hearings and so on. If that happens tonight, then the rest of the schedule is laid out there for you. The thing that will happen very relatively soon is the financial closing on Phase One and the construction and completion of Phase One. And I think what you'll hear from SIC is that they're very much looking forward to getting going on Phase Two. But that is something that would happen a couple of years from now. So I know there's a number of the SIC folks on the call, the conference today, and I think I'll let Marty introduce his team. And with that, I will pull up a presentation that they sent to me, and Marty can go through that. Marty, you can just tell me to advance slide or something like that when you're ready to go. But I will stop talking for a little bit, and then Marty can go through his presentation, and then we'll get on with the other parts of the agenda.
You bet. Thanks, Shane. So just quickly, what we have here, Dave McGinty, our facilities manager. Dave has been working with the Port very, I think cooperatively over the last couple of years to get this whole project going from our side. Bob Lumaca, Bob's a president here at SIC. And Bob and Dave have both been present at the prior two meetings where we've been with the Council. Taylor is here to ensure that we can make all of our technology work. So far, so good. And we have one new attendee. I'd like to introduce Tasha Burry. Tasha started as our CFO here at SIC in April of this year. So Tasha comes to us from Hilti, another European parent company. And we're really delighted to have her here at SIC as our CFO. So you'll probably be seeing more of Tasha as well. So that's the SIC team, and I'll go through this overview, Shane. Although I have to admit, I read your documentation, and I thought, geez, in one paragraph, Shane summarized SIC better than I'm going to do in this presentation. So you pretty much have it down. But let's quickly go through this. We are a subsidiary of SIC AG. SIC AG is the global parent of the entire SIC group around the world. Next slide. And really, our offering, what we do is we provide sensors for industrial applications. So you probably won't ever see our sensors in buildings or in homes or some other fields, but you will definitely see them in factories, in logistics warehouses, in could be at wellheads or certainly on gas pipelines for transportation of natural gas and also in chemical processing facilities. So very much industrial sensors. Next slide. And when I say industrial sensors, there's 40,000 of them, and this is just what some of those things look like. A lot of sensing technologies from optical and laser to ultrasonic sensing, to electromagnetic, all various kinds of sensing. But SIC is very much focused in this sensing world in industry. And as there is additional automation added in plants and distribution centers, you need sensors for all of that automation. So it's a very healthy market space. So the SIC name, that's a good slide. Go ahead. Go ahead, Shane. That's a good slide. As Shane described, SIC is a family name. The company was started just after the end of World War II, where the US authorities, then in charge in Germany, granted Erwin SIC a license to start his own business. And if you go to the next slide, he started that company in Munich. But we are now headquartered in Waldeckers, Germany, which is just in the southwest corner of Germany, about 20 miles from France and about 40 miles from Switzerland. And you can see we are literally in the Black Forest, and that's the Black Forest you can see in the background. Dr. Erwin SIC died years ago, but his wife, Gisela SIC, who you can see in the lower right corner, still lives, and she's still active in the business, at least keeping track of the business. So it's delightful to see her still active. And it is still 90%, family-owned business. Next slide. So where do we operate? We operate in these three major business fields: factory automation, logistics automation, and process automation. And you can see some of the factory automation applications there or segments. And we play in most all of these in the US. You know, very heavily, though, in the packaging, consumer goods, automotive up there at the top, and food production. It's very much a big part of where we play in the US in factory automation. The next slide, I think, is logistics automation. And, you know, this is a picture in the background of an airport. But airports and the baggage handling associated with airports are just one element of logistics automation. I think it's far more prevalent in the, let's say, the fourth bullet down, courier, express, parcel, and postal. This is where you get all of the delivery trucks that are driving up and down our streets these days, delivering packages during COVID. We work with all of those major, major express companies as well as working with most all the major retailers and the warehousing and distribution that they do. And yes, we do provide the baggage sensing in the MSP airport as well, as well as most other major airports in the US. And then the third slide on the segments here is process automation. The next slide shows a little bit of where we operate. This is, as the slide would, the picture would suggest, chemical processing and also in the oil and gas business, but really the gas part of the business. We have some very good technology for measuring gas flow. So all of the transmission of that gas from the oil fields out to the users is oftentimes measured with SIC gas flow meters. Okay, next slide. This is our mission statement, has existed for probably as long as I've been here at SIC for 17 years. Independence, innovation, and leadership. SIC is a family-owned company, an independent company, and we really want to stay that way. That is really the preference of the SIC family. Innovation is a key to the business, and you'll see that we keep track of statistics like the percent of revenue that we spend on R and D. So innovation is really critical, and it's a big part of the culture within SIC. And then leadership is also a critical part of our mission. Leading, not only leading as a business, but leading internal to SIC in terms of our own leadership skills and behaviors. So independence, innovation, and leadership sort of form that mission statement in our internal culture as well. Next slide. You can see the SIC presence around the world. The blue shaded geographies are where SIC has sales subsidiaries. And we've been here in the US since 1976, I think. And in fact, our headquarters in the US has been in and around Minneapolis ever since then. And we are also, as you can see, one of only two places on the globe that has the three circles. Us in Germany. So we have not only that sales subsidiary capability, but we have local production here and local competence center and local development. Not nearly as much as Germany has, but we want to grow that, and so do they. So that's, we're probably a much more well-rounded version of SIC than you might see in most other sales subsidiaries around the world. Next slide. I think this is our SIC at a glance, kind of gives you some of the parameters to measure the business. We showed the same slide two years ago. So this is 2019 results, but I think it's two years incremental to what you might have seen a couple of years ago. You can see over on the upper left, just close to $2 billion in sales, 1 billion 7 euros. Within that, out of that $2 billion sales, we generate an EBIT of 100 and Within that, out of that two billion dollar sales, we generate an EBIT of hundred and forty-five million, so slightly under, under ten percent EBIT. Over in the, you can see at the bottom forty thousand, that's that number of products that I talked about. So lots of, lots of products. And over on the lower right, you can see that R and D expenditure, two hundred and twenty-one million dollars, US dollars. And if you divide that into the one point nine billion of sales, you can see that SIC spends over ten percent of revenue on R and D, which is a, an item and actually a KPI within the company that's measured and looked at very closely and the company is very proud of. And then the total employees up at the top is, is just over ten thousand. I think if you go to the next slide, Shane, it shows the advancement in the number of employees. And you can see SIC grows employees virtually every year. You can see in the twenty nineteen up at ten thousand and you can see that ten thousand is the total global employees, that the gray bar is the number of employees in Germany. It's still a German company with, with many more facilities and factories in Germany, but that's something that they want to change as well and become a better global participant. So I think I have only one slide left that it, it just shows what we spent four mornings at, starting at three AM every day on Webexes with German management rolling out the new, the new kind of strategy and our outlook, SIC beyond borders. You can see the, the blue person there is the, is SIC and the orange person is the customer. They're always at the center. It's very dynamic, sort of the atomic rings around it. And it's, it's meant to be very connected. We, the SIC beyond borders is meant to get us all within SIC, working as a much stronger network amongst each other with even better collaboration and partnering within the organization globally. So that's something that will drive us and our, and our growth going forward from here. And, and thank you. I think that's my, my quick overview of SIC.
Shane, if I could just interject here briefly, I think most of you know I was a trustee of the Minnesota State College and Universities for six years and have had an interest in technical vocational education before and since then. And I felt strongly about the whole role Germany has played in this. So starting in fact, I and another Rotarian and two instructors and two students from Henupan Technical College took a trip to Germany to see specifically companies like SIC. And I just have to tell you, I was tremendously impressed. They have been the, companies like SIC have been the backbone of the German manufacturing resurgence and had just done a wonderful job in terms of developing expertise in specialty areas. So I'm really excited about SIC and about the opportunities this, this gives us for Bloomington. And I think hopefully there also will be some opportunities to work with SIC on some of the programs that, that many German companies use in terms of developing future staff and that. They've just done a wonderful job. So I'm just delighted that we're having this discussion.
Thanks Bob and thanks Marty. We really appreciate the partnership that we've had so far and appreciate all that on SIC generally. I pause now just in case there are any other questions for council or port authority on SIC as a company.
Counsel, any additional questions on the presentation to this point?
Hi, this is Rob. I'd just like to know how many employees in Bloomington presently?
Oh.
Or the United States, Bloomington and the United States, I guess.
The, in the United States, we have around seven hundred employees. I think that, you know, we have a lot of sales and service employees that are distributed remotely. So in, in the, I would say the Minnesota area, although they tend to be very focused in Bloomington and Savage right now, we have, we have close to three hundred employees.
If not, we'll proceed. Thank you Marty. Obviously appreciate your team staying on, on the phone and the call and if there are questions later.
Sure.
So this is, is the combined interstate and Alpha site, broken up into four parcels for the, for the phases, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. So phase one up here in the green, phase two on the right side of the blue, and future phases on lot two in the northwest and in the left side of the blue parcel. So what's, where does the, where does the public investment get put and where is it funded? So uses for the public investment, by far the biggest pieces are the land price adjustment and structured parking. There are some other things that we can go through, but those are by far the biggest things that we spend money on for this project. And the funding would come from the Carlton TIF, the South Loop Development Fund and Mall Administration and Reserve Fund. This slide has got a lot of information on it. It was in the packet. I assume people have taken a look at it, but it really breaks down what we're doing by phase. So phase one again is production and logistics with a relatively small portion of office, about a hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Phase two is the office building. Phase three is some more production logistics. And phase four is a future office building with additional production and logistics, totaling somewhere between four hundred and five hundred and fifty thousand square feet of development. Parking would get built in phases. The first phase is surface parked, then we build a up to five hundred and fifty space, structured parking ramp. And we continue to use that parking ramp in surface parking. And then we build another phase of structured parking if the project needs it. Job goals are here. I know that SIC plans on adding many more jobs than that, but those are the goals that are in the business subsidy agreement. And then the public investment summary, you've got structured parking costs, which in our budgets are inflated, but these are two thousand and twenty numbers. You've got land price adjustments for the various phases. There's an underground stormwater treatment component because of the runway that we would be investing in. And then there's public investment and then cumulative public investment. And then at the bottom is, are the funding sources. And so we have this Carlton TIF district that still collects money for one more year and we would utilize that and then close that fund out. The Mall A R F Administration and Reserve Fund TIF, we would utilize funds from that funding source, South Loop Development Fund, which is another item tonight, which we'll go through total sources, total business subsidy, and then total business subsidy accumu- accumu- accumulative number at the bottom. And so the difference between public investment and business subsidy is that public use of the parking ramp that we need in order to be able to use the South Loop Development Fund. With that, I might pause on this because I'm, I just want to make sure that the council and port authority are able to pause here and ask questions if, if they have any at this point. But you know, the rest of the agenda, we'll go through all the development agreements and get into this a little bit more detail, but maybe I'll pause for questions.
Shane, I just wanted to raise a point I'd raised with you in discussion. On the parking ramp, it's a little different than what we usually see where the tenant or in this case SIC would pay all the expenses. And there is some sharing of that because it would be available for public use. So you may just want to comment a little bit on that.
Yeah. Yep. So the, the difference in this project than, for example, the Teratron project, the Alpha A and B, where we build that parking ramp, we are the owner for twenty years, the port authority is, but then the developer owns and operates the ramp because they're using the complete ramp twenty, twenty-four seven, but using it all the time. This project is different in that the parking ramp is, is shared use and there's a couple of reasons for that. The first one is so that we can use the South Loop Development Fund monies for the parking ramp. Second one is that if the, if the project stops at any particular phase, we still have rights to the parking ramp and shared use. So we lease, the parking, structured parking lease allows SIC to use the ramp during the business hours when they need it, but also allows the city to use that parking ramp at night. Say if we develop a hotel there, some, in some future year, we can utilize the ramp, which is night parking use and things like that. And so ongoing maintenance costs and things like that would be shared by the parties to accommodate that, that shared use. And that's really what Bob is getting at. So it is a little bit different than the mall ramps or Bloomington Central Station ramp or the Teratron ramp or anything like that. And it's really because we have one user here in SIC that is developing the site. And the other uses, we haven't decided on them yet. They may be SIC. Or if they stop, then it would be other development that the port and council would consider.
But, but that's, that's exactly what we've tried to do in a number of cases, that we could have facilities that can be used by more users. So I mean, I think it's really an underlying principle we've had and actually it's been one of the exciting things with the malls that's grown because they could put the office space in because the office space users weren't, weren't using it at the same time for the most part as retail users. So it's the synergy. And so I think it's a, it's a very good concept, but, but it is a little different than what we've had in other projects.
Great. Yeah, and we'll talk about that here in a second too, with the phasing of the parking to try to build as little parking as we can along the way. Certainly we need to make sure that SIC is parked. They're not going to have a parking shortage. That's first and foremost. But as Bob said, shared parking has been near and dear to my heart for a long time. And I think a lot of people on staff, myself certainly included, think that parking ratios are going to go down in the future as transit improves, ride sharing improves, and driverless cars become more of a reality.
Counsel or port, any additional questions? I know that President Erickson can't see you and I'm kind of limited in terms of the number of faces that I can see at one time. So if you have a question, you can either raise your hand virtually or just pipe in verbally as well. And I'm seeing or hearing.
Mr. Mayor and President.
Mr. Ruddling.
Thank you. And President Mayor and board members, of course, we can always come back to this if there's questions that come up along the way. Taxes and subsidies. So here on this slide, we project the estimated taxes by phase, assessing if they were here tonight, they would want to make sure that I say very loud and clear that nobody is committing or anything like that to these numbers. They're just estimates based on a snapshot in time. And so that's, that's what they are. Company investment roughly over the various phases. And then others you might remember from previous agenda items related to this in the past, we did a, I wouldn't say a deep dive, but Dr. Eric Johnson did a report to the council and port authority on subsidies per job and the thresholds and things like that. Bottom line is as long as you're under thirty-five thousand in subsidy per job, you're, you're in the clear. You get above thirty-five and you start having to ask more questions, but we're way below that. And this project, you know, this is maybe a good time to talk about the fact that this is a different type of project than the port has done in the, in the recent past anyway, where we're really doing an economic development project here. We're not doing a housing project. We're doing an economic development project to bring jobs and keep a, an important company in Minnesota and in Bloomington. The, whoops, the wages that SIC has currently in Minnesota, they're averaging eighty-one thousand a year in wages with a median of eighty-five thousand. Phase two, which is the operation south of the river that would come up, is an average of sixty-four thousand and change and a median of sixty-three eight. And then when phase two moves onto the site, that moves up considerably and then the median goes up to eighty-three six. And the combined phase one and phase two would be about eighty-one and the median, again, eighty-three six, not a typo. We had to check those numbers twice, make sure that that actually worked, worked out that way. But, so these are good paying jobs in Bloomington and in South Loop, which is, is good. So development considerations, SIC likes the site for the proximity to the airport. There are negatives related to the site as well with noise and vibration and perceived safety impacts with the site being at the end of the runway. Transit is obviously a benefit to the site with transit stops at the mall and Twenty-eighth Avenue right nearby. Again, these things all are different when you think, you know, we're, in the pandemic, we talk about nearby amenities like restaurants and hotels, business travel and things like that, all, all a little bit, just hard to think about right now, but we will get out of this pandemic at some point. And then generally, central location in the metro. Again, pandemic aside, being able to drive from St. Paul, employees from St. Paul, Minneapolis, et cetera, to the site is very easy. If you're going to and from South Loop, you realize how quick, how quick you can get places from there. So reasons to proceed, you know, retains the Bloomington company. They have a presence in Houston and they had analyzed the move, to move their North American headquarters to that location. This project would provide economic development to the region, create good paying jobs in Bloomington, close to transit. And really, the fifth bullet there is the COVID factor. You know, we had diversity, the economy, the tax base and types of jobs available in Bloomington and South Loop. We've all learned a lot about lodging and how important that is to the city's both employment base and its budget. This is a different thing. So this grows office space in Bloomington when the office market may be challenged for years permanently due to COVID. I mean, nobody knows exactly when people will be back in the office and, you know, I personally think that the office market's going to be challenged for quite some time. And then I'll go through these really quickly. You've seen these before, but you know, with how we're phasing the parking structure, we're trying to minimize the structured parking cost. This is a rendering of a ramp that we had considered over on the mall site that could be skinned and then reused and converted to other uses. This is the Bloomington Benley, BCS Benley project, where we planned for a portion of their parking ramp to be taken out at some point and then more apartments or other uses built in that space. And this really didn't cost that project anything. It's just more planning and pricing out construction joints or placing construction joints in the right spot because we don't want this to be the adaptive reuse, even though some people might think this is fun. So now we're to the really fun part, to go through the agreements. And I'm happy to go through this as, in detail, as people want to. We also have the city attorney on call tonight as well as Julie Eddington, the port authority's attorney, and Becky Schindler. All of us have worked diligently with the SIC team, especially over the past three weeks, to hammer out all the final details in the agreements. But I will go through, through those here. You're familiar with the agreement outline that I put together for these projects and these slides, which probably can get boring. But once again, I'll go through them relatively quickly and people can pull me down if they want to talk about any parts of this. So really how this project plays out is that SIC builds three hundred and ninety thousand to five hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of development over four phases. The city sells to SIC these parcels for their North American headquarters and requires SIC to keep the headquarters there. The port and city build the parking ramp and adjust the land cost to make it all feasible. And the city conveys to the port authority the southwest parcel for the structured parking and, and/or for future development if we don't need all that space for structured parking. And then the phases roll out, as I had laid out earlier, where the first phase is on the northeast parcel. I probably don't need to go into that in more detail. The phase two is in the southeast parcel, that's the office building. We have to do some underground stormwater management and so on. And then phase three happens, that's a relatively small phase. And then assuming that they need all that office space in the future, then we build the larger office building, the second office building on the west side of the southeast parcel. And we pay for the structured parking spaces up to the parking need at that time. We do commit the port, city and port funding and that's via the attached public investment summary and then that's memorialized in the documents. We are responsible for environmental costs, as I mentioned earlier. We'll pass those on to Interstate Diesel, the final bill's going to come out soon. Hopefully there's nothing additional beyond that. We do have environmental insurance as a city and we do require that SIC contractor have environmental insurance as well. But yeah. The second main agreement is a purchase and option agreement. So this is the, I want to say your standard purchase agreement because it's got a lot of other stuff in it, but it's the land purchase agreement. It outlines the price and purchase for SIC to buy these parcels. The purchase price is based on a five million dollar starting point, prorated for each parcel size, less an adjustment. When we all became aware of the Excel line consideration, we adjusted the price down by ten percent. by 10%. And that was part of the LOI that the port and council considered back in a year ago exactly today. And then there's timing that's laid out in the document for the various phases and deadlines for SIC options to be available to them. Structured parking lease and management agreement. So again, SIC uses it during the hours that they need it, and it's public for the other hours. And then if we, once again, per se, build a hotel on one of the sites or an adjacent site, we can use the parking during that time. We share in the maintenance taxes and assessments, security, and other costs. And insurance is paid by SIC. Can't charge for parking. Surface parking easement agreement just says that on the northeast parcel, excuse me, northwest parcel, SIC can build surface parking there to benefit Phase One, gives us the right to move that parking around later if we need to. And then temporary construction easement. Last one, business subsidy agreement. It's an important one. There's both a form of the business subsidy agreement and then two business subsidy agreements in the development agreement that contemplate Phase One and then Phase Two. And so there's a little nuance here, because the LOI back a year ago today was executed right before the city had changed its wage goals on the business subsidy policy. So there's a little bit of grandfathering on the Phase One business subsidy agreement, 135% of minimum wage. And then the Phase Two and all the other ones would have to comply with the business subsidy policy at the time. But basically, how these business subsidy agreements work is that if the company doesn't meet the job goals, then they have to pay back that subsidy calculation divided by, so if they promise 100 jobs and only provide 99, then they have to pay back 1% of the business subsidy is how that works. Primary risks to the city, losing SIC, you know, not doing the project. We might lose SIC in Minnesota or in Bloomington. They have investigated other sites, once again, both around the country and in the metro. And I know that, anyway, we've been open and honest about that. Another risk, another primary risk, is that the project stops at Phase One. It's something that, from a planning commission standpoint and the city council entitlement standpoint, and we've expressed this to SIC all along the way, and that, you know, we're concerned about the project stopping at Phase One, and we don't, you know, end up with the office building there. But there's a risk, and we're aware of that. We're trying to mitigate that as much as we can by limiting the size of the northeast parcel. And, you know, it's just the land adjustment cost on the northeast side that we're out if they stop at Phase One. Really, Phase Two is where the meat of the project is, and it will be good, from my perspective, if we get to Phase Two. And even if they don't build anything after that, I think that's a win for Bloomington. Secondary risks, you know, there's always, you know, especially as we sit here in the pandemic with selfless development fund being funded by liquor and lodging taxes, we have very conservatively projected that fund, and well, that's the other item tonight. We can go through that. But we continue to be very conservative when we project expenses and revenues for that fund for reasons like this. We want to be able to make commitments here and not have to worry about them later. There's no borrowing related to this project, which is always a great place to be in when you're doing these economic development projects. We do have some environmental risk, as I mentioned before, and then maintenance costs for our half of the parking there. That's, once again, as Bob pointed out, it's unusual that we would take on maintenance costs, but the reasons, I laid out them previously. So maybe I'll pause again there in case there's any specific questions about the agreements. The next item would, next agenda item tonight would be the hearing and testimony portion, and I've laid that out so that President Erickson and the mayor can hold the public hearings. But maybe this is another good time to pause for any other detailed questions.
Well, Shane, I just would like to comment. I mean, again, being conservative has been, in terms of these projections and things, has been the long-term philosophy of the city ever since I've been involved over some 30 years. And quite frankly, we saved our bacon a number of times by doing that, because when we first entered into the Mall of America project, for example, there was much more available for tax increment and other things. And because we had been conservative, when some of the statutes and things were changed, we were unaffected to the degree, and it was not something that stopped the project. So I just want to comment that I think that that's been a really important philosophy, and hopefully will continue to be.
Yeah, I know, I'll speak for staff, President Erickson and members, that we agree. I mean, we're lucky, because we're not sitting here tonight talking about a bond issuance for a project that we want to do. And we're also not sitting here saying, sorry, SIC, we can't do this deal because of COVID. So we're in an enviable position.
Counselor Port, any questions? And then we'll open the public hearing, and then we can move to discussion after we close the public hearing. But do you have any questions based on the presentation to this point? I am hearing none. President Erickson, perhaps it would be, perhaps it would be time to open the public hearing. President Erickson?
I think that's a good move.
Very good. I will, first of all, I will make note for the record that Councilmember Nelson did join us at 6:19. He arrived, so we do have five members of the city council in attendance now. And with that, I would like to open the public hearing of the Bloomington City Council to consider the sale of the property to SIC and to consider granting business subsidies to SIC. And I believe, President Erickson, are we doing these concurrently? President Erickson, perhaps if you could open the Port Authority to consider the business subsidies.
I would do the same thing. And I'm looking at the motions here, so I think you actually have two motions for the city first, and then one for the Port Authority. Whatever makes the most sense, I'll defer to you.
Well, we're not taking the motions quite yet. I've just opened the public hearing.
Okay.
And if you wanted to open the public hearing for the Port Authority Board to consider the business subsidies to SIC.
I will open the meeting for the public hearing for the Port Authority. Thank you.
Okay. James, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, James. Do we have any callers waiting for the public hearing related to SIC?
There are no callers at this time.
Okay. Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one coming forward to address the council for this public hearing. Counsel, I would look for a motion to close the council portion of this public hearing.
All moved.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Lane to close the city council portion of this public hearing. Councilmember Martin, a question? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Councilmember Martin, I apologize. I apologize. Ms. Lane, could you call the roll of the city council on the vote to close the public hearing?
Logue is not here, sorry. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman, not here. Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye.
City Council votes 5-0 to close the public hearing. President Erickson?
I would then entertain a similar motion for the Port Authority.
All moved.
Did you get that, Carolyn? Who made the motion and second?
Carter and Hunt?
Hunt made the motion. Carter seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for the roll call vote, Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, motion carries 7-0.
6-0.
You should probably note, Carolyn, that Tim Keller abstains.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So with the public, the public hearing closed, counsel, is there any further discussion or question regarding the proposed ordinances that, ordinance resolution regarding this Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just briefly thank staff. I noticed, as folks will recall, last time we discussed this, I asked both about the mean and the median wages for the jobs that will be taking place here. And I appreciate staff including that information as well and that we received. And I think it helped me certainly to understand better the, sort of the, the kinds of jobs that will be retained and created here. So I just wanted to thank staff for that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I am really excited about this project and proposal. You know, I think we've all talked a lot about diversifying the business base within the South Loop, and I think this does that. I also, just on a personal note, I know Bob had talked about visiting that area with Rotary. I had the opportunity, when I was in college, to study just to the south of Stuttgart, which is not too far from where SIC headquarters is, and at a university that focused on education. And it was just a very impressive, a very inspiring opportunity for me when I was in college to do that study, brought experience in Germany, and got to hike in the Black Hills and things like that. So a little bit of a very distant connection there personally, but I just, this project, in my opinion, makes a lot of sense, and really appreciate all of the work that staff has done, that SIC has done on it, and I hope we can get all of the phases built as we go forward.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to chime in with my, with my excitement as well. I think this is a really great proposal that's moving forward, and I just really want to thank the staff for all of the time and energy that has obviously gone into making, to getting it this far, and just for how thorough you were. And, I mean, I think it speaks volumes that none of us really had questions, because it's just been such a great presentation, and appreciated all the information provided in the packet. I'll chime in, too, with my connection to Germany, because I lived in Ramstein and ran cross-country in the, in the Black Forest there, and so had to chime in and share as well. But again, very excited about this project, and just want to thank everybody that's been involved for all the work that's gone into it.
Digital comments? I'll just add my enthusiastic support of this as well. And looking at, looking at this, this project, as I think I mentioned to you, a couple of weeks back, I was at a ribbon cutting over at Skywater Technologies. Every day, I drive past the updates that they're doing at Donaldson Company. There are so many outstanding international companies here in the city of Bloomington that are not only, they're not only here and doing great business, they're thriving, and they're doing outstanding work. And to add SIC to that number, to that growing number, to get a development of this kind is enormously exciting. So looking forward to the groundbreaking, looking forward to the ribbon cutting. Hopefully, we won't have to wear masks when we do it, but something tells me we might. But excited to have this done. And so this, I would give this my full-throated support, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing else, I'm happy to make a motion.
Councilmember Coulter, we have two motions for the city council to make, and if you would lead us with that, that would be wonderful, and then we would turn it over to the Port Authority for the motion that they need to make.
I am more than happy to make both motions here.
Please.
So I will start by moving to adopt an ordinance to convey by warranty deed real property.
Second, Martin.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance to convey by warranty deed real property. City Council, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Lane, could you please call the city council? Roll.
Yes. Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Councilmember Coulter?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with the Port Authority and SIC Products and Competence Center Americas LLC and other related documents, the conveyance of land to the Port Authority.
Second, Martin.
And a motion by Coulter and a second by Councilmember Martin to approve the development agreement. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Lane?
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
And so then I would entertain a, for motion number three for the Port Authority, to adopt a resolution approving development agreement with the city and SIC Products and Competence Centers Americas. So we have a commissioner that will make that motion.
Move by Peterson.
Second, but I have a question or comment.
Councilmember Luns with his hands up, or, excuse me, Commissioner Luns with his hands up.
Yeah. Make it quick. Just start, just articulate the obvious, which community, what community would not want a company of this nature to be in its presence? That's all I had to say.
Okay, great. We have a motion made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Carolyn, do you want to call the roll?
Bussie?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Luns?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Keller?
Do you have Keller?
Abstain.
Abstain, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries 7-0.
6-0 with one abstain.
Okay, I didn't hear that Tim abstained. All right.
Well, congratulations to our friends from SIC, and welcome aboard. And as I said, I'm very excited about this and look forward to next spring, when we can actually see some work developing over there. And just excited beyond words, the diversification of the Bloomington economy, the addition of your workforce here in Bloomington, and the added presence, and just what the future might hold. So very excited for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, and the board authority. And we echo the compliments also to staff for the very thorough preparation. It was really a pleasure working over the last couple of years to get this to the point it's at. So thanks to staff as well.
And please express our appreciation to your family management. I mean, this is an example of really long-term vision, to be able to talk and look at these things, and your commitment to R and D and all these things, only speak eloquently of the type of company you are. So it's just wonderful I have you in Minnesota, and I think that hopefully the opportunities for future growth will continue.
We believe so. Thank you.
Yep. And I'd like to just also say, it's been a pleasure working with SIC, pleasure working with SIC so far. We look forward to many more years of working together on the, on the future phases. Your team's been top-notch and just a pleasure to work with. And also, I'd just like to say again, you know, the staff team, thanks for all the efforts. It's always a lot of work right at the end, especially to get all the documents to line up and things like that. And I just want to extend thanks to our legal and the rest of the staff team, Becky and everybody, too. So, thank you.
Anything additional here, folks? If not, we will thank our friends from SIC once more, once more. Looking forward to many years of working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One point of business, we will, Mayor, okay to release the public hearing call-in?
Yes, if you could release the operator for our public hearing, that'd be wonderful.
James, thank you very much. You are released. Thank you.
President Erickson, I think we have one more item on our agenda this evening.
That's what I look, looks like to me, Mayor. So we want to have Shane bring that up? And?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, President, and members, I'm just loading up the PowerPoint here. It'll just be one second. So the the other item here tonight is, excuse me, the overview of the South Loop Development Fund. Again, as you read in the packet, the South Loop Development Fund isn't a budget. And I know Lori is on the phone, and she can explain that more if people want to go into why there isn't a budget approved for this fund. But basically, it's a capital projects fund, and all the projects that use the fund are considered separately is how that works. And so, again, the city collects lodging tax. You know, we've all become painfully aware. Three percent of that, painfully aware during COVID is what I mean, three percent of that goes to the city's general fund. Two percent of it goes to BCVB, our Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, and two percent of it goes to the South Loop Development Fund. And this is laid out in state statute as to as to why this happens. Obviously, these revenues have been severely impacted by the pandemic. And then the South Loop Development Fund also gets the citywide on sale liquor tax. Originally, these funds were or these taxes were set up to backstop development on the mall site. And then legislation in 2008 and 10 broadened the use of the South Loop Development Fund to other projects in South Loop. And so that's all currently codified in state statute. So once a year, we get together to talk. It's not a budget, but it's a it's a review of how the fund is doing. Once again, each and every project is considered separately, either council approval or purchasing policies, things like that. And so there's three slides that were included in the packet that that show how the fund is doing. And so I'll start with revenues, and I'll just kind of walk through this. And this is informal. If people have other comments, then of course, stop me along the way. The main source of revenue is the liquor and lodging tax, as I as I mentioned. The reason why we have other funding sources in here, I'll get into in a second. But the second line here is I input the revenue shortfall from our long recovery scenario from the October 1. We just actually had a meeting earlier today to project revenues again and review the Smith Travel Research data and our actual lodging and liquor collections. And it's, you know, obviously not good. In fact, you know, we did three scenarios back in April, and we looked at the long recovery scenario, a middle scenario, and a better scenario. And unfortunately, we're riding the long scenario recovery line. And when we looked at this back in April, and we looked at that long recovery scenario line, we said, geez, if we're if we're on that side, things are really bad. But unfortunately, from an economic standpoint, otherwise, things are really bad. And so that takes us out through 2024. I put another deduct in here ongoing into self in the South Loop Fund. And we do this for 10 years, you know, informally, obviously, 10 years is a long ways to go. But we do have this out through all the 20, early 2030s. But I didn't include that in the packet. But I started to feather out this COVID effect over time. But really, what we've done here is taken the 2019 revenue and flatlined it and then layered in the impact of our long recovery COVID scenario in here. And then I've added another deduct ongoing because some of the hotels are going to convert to residential and/or business travel may not come back to where it was in 2019. We just don't know. So, you know, you'll see a number of things in here that we've done conservatively. And I think an argument can be made that we're conservative on conservative. But again, that's maybe served us well. But it is what it is at this point. So we do have some other income in in the fund because we've used the fund as a bank, in essence. And so when the Kilbruck Pedbridge project was assessed, instead of going out and selling bonds, we said, why would we do that when we have money in this fund that can gain interest and gain interest or gain payments through those assessments at a much higher rate than we could invest the fund? And so we use this fund as a blank as a bank for a couple of projects, the Kilbruck Pedbridge assessment and the freeway weight binding assessment. We do get some interest income, and that's just a good guess. Obviously, interest income today is very low. And then we did use the fund for some loans to the BCS Hotel Project. And those loans, we call them the ketchup mustard loans for those veterans of the Port Authority. I guess I don't need to go into why they're called that. But if people want to know, I can certainly do that. Anyway, those will be done here in 2021. These other grants and intergovernmental charges. So we use this fund as a bank again to pay for some COVID related expenses before we got the CARES money in. So Green Streets and Trep, these are both data services, in essence, that were able to provide us some information related to the hotel and retail industry. Frankly, pretty valuable information during the the time that COVID was going on, and in particular with trip as it relates or trip, well, both Green Streets and trip, I guess, as it relates to Mall of America and helping us understand the the financial situation there. We, once again, this is because we use the the fund as a bank. And so we would get some money back when this water main project happens on 82nd Street from our own utilities fund. And then, again, this fund is used as a bank. So we pay out for the environmental remediation as it relates to the SIC site and the environmental demo. And then we should get that money back here within the next month after we build them. The fund then gets back the money from the interstate and Alpha sales from SIC because we use the South Loop Fund to pay for those sites originally. And then expenditures. So there's two slides of expenditures. I split those out into different categories this year. Transfers, active projects, things that we're spending money on or have spent money on currently, and then future projects, which we work with Public Works and others on. And then there's a number of professional services that are economic development related that we pay for, and then ongoing maintenance on a number of things. And so to go through each one of these, I'll go through them relatively quickly. And again, if people want to to pause and talk about any of these in more detail, certainly happy to do that. And we've got other content matter experts on the phone slash WebEx here as well. And so the fund pays for a number of police officers in South Loop and at the mall. In a way, this is a subsidy to the general fund out of the South Loop Fund because normally, you know, that that money would have to come out of the of the general fund. And so because we're able to do that, that's that's been going on for a long time. There was an uptick in police operations after the 2015 security situation out at the mall. And the council will be deciding at some point in the future if they want to continue that expenditure on in perpetuity, or if they want to reduce the police force back to what it was pre 2015. But right now, once again, for worst case, I've put this money in there for now. The fund pays for creative placemaking, the stuff that can happen in South Loop. And it also pays or transfers out to the Port General Fund to pay for activities that that aren't related to one of our TIF statistics in South Loop. Active projects, there's a little bit left on Old Cedar. Fire Station 3 is finishing up. This this fund paid for Fire Station 3. Again, that's something that the city would have normally had to pay for out of the general fund, were able to pay for it at the South Loop. So that happened. A number of street projects, Interstate Diesel. You will see the water park on here. It's not because we're spending money or doing anything specifically with the water park today. That's certainly not the case. Once COVID happened, that project was put on hold and remains on hold until we know what the effects of the pandemic are on projects like the water park. However, I do still have it in 2021. You'll see that it's basically a push. There's eight million as an expense and seven and a half million as a negative expense, i.e. money coming in out of the bond closing. And so if the project were to move forward in 2021, this is what it would look like. But again, that project isn't being worked on right now. We are keeping in touch with our project partners, Barclays in Providence and Mall of America. And, you know, if the pandemic, you know, turns the corner at some point, and that project looks feasible, we'll of course come back to the Council and Port Authority to make sure that the Council and Port want to move forward with that project because obviously, the world changed back in March. There's some legal costs, and then South Loop Street lighting in South Loop. Future projects, these are a lot of intersection projects and things like that. I'm not sure if folks want to go through each one of those. So I won't unless people want to talk about them. Some big expenses, certainly SIC. As I obviously in the last item, that's a big one. And then there's another big SIC expense out into the future ways. But we've really spent a fair amount of time during the pandemic to try to to move certain projects out and and reduce them to the extent we can in this fund to make sure that at the bottom line, we stay solvent with a relatively healthy margin because who knows what else 2020 is going to throw at us. Other items, legislative services. So so this is some of the lobbying expenses. Expo shows up in here, but we don't project any future expo expenses at this time. Of course, that could change if the council and Port Authority decide that that we need some more work there. Again, this is the COVID, Green Streets and Trip, money going in, money coming out situation that I talked about at the top. Basically, the fund is used as as a bank. I'm not sure Lori would like me saying it like that, but that's the way I think about it anyway. She can, she can't get me under the table for for quite a long time until we're in person meetings again. And then we do use Green Streets as on an ongoing basis for property information services. It helps really helps us understand the hotel and retail market, all markets, but in particular, as it relates to South Loop Hotel Office Retail. And then it pays for a number of maintenance activities that are specifically South Loop project related. Bottom line, annual net gain and loss, fund balance, which is different than cash balance, which is different than the cash balance net of required reserve. And what that relates to is we put up a million and a half dollars as a backstop to the Lennar Indigo Project when that project closed, not as an expense in particular, but as a reserve. So if if that project were to underperform, we said, hey, we'll put aside a million and a half dollars in the South Loop Fund until those bonds are able to pay themselves off. So we have to discount the the cash less fund balance in this South Loop Fund in order to account for that. We've never had to dip into it. And frankly, the project is producing a lot more TIF than we had projected originally because the rental market is so strong and continues to be one of the areas that continues to show strength even in the pandemic. And so with that, you know, if I were to show the next, I think we only go out to 2034 or something along that. But of course, it gets a lot more blurry as as you get out into future years, you'd see this fund dip down into the, you know, couple million dollar net reserve cash balance range and then moves up and around. But, you know, of course, we do this every year, and we try to keep the fund healthy and do conservative budgeting. But with that, certainly happy to talk more about any any items that folks want to talk about.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Port, you can chime in as well. I'm offering that on behalf of President Erickson.
Yeah, well, and I'll just comment. I mean, I think, again, this this chart and all this work is just a good illustration of how well certainly done by staff. And I know for Shane and 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 our city manager and and Cindy and Jacob and everybody, they've just put in tremendous number of hours as we've gone through all these things trying to deal with all the uncertainties that have been there. And so, again, it's it's nice to see something that I think we can look forward. And to me, it's just, you know, even with the things we're talking about doing here, and it's primarily a city council, not a port or anything, but we there's some flexibility in case something comes up or in case things don't go as well as we would like, even if we're conservatives. So it's just it's it's a very good discussion to have. And it gives me, as a citizen of Bloomington, a good deal of comfort.
President Erickson, I see Commissioner Peterson with his hand up.
Yeah, I just just to comment on this. And I I think it's worth, even though this isn't kind of run as a operating budget, that it's primarily a capital budget, I think it's worth regularly talking about the kind of operating costs that get charged into here. And so if you look at the like, the street sweeping and the public safety costs that were on the previous page that Shane was showing, you see the kind of how costs related to the Airport South District are getting charged into this fund. And, you know, kind of the the interesting thing about that is if you didn't have a big kind of use, a big use like this that generated this kind of revenue to be able to pay for that, that would end up getting paid out of general property taxes. And so it shows how, even though, you know, a certain amount of this money comes in here for development, we're also trying to maximize the amount that we can shift away from the property taxes in this fund. And I think it's worth periodically periodically reviewing that so people understand it.
This item is just informational. There is no action that's requested or required related to it. So obviously, President and Mayor, happy to discuss any of the detail in here. But just as a reminder, there's there is the item is only informational.
Counsel, anything else to consider here? Anything questions you have specific to it? Lot of information, good information, as always. Mr. President, I see Commissioner Hunt with her hand up.
Just a comment to, thank you. Just to comment to Shane and staff of of just being able to see, you know, the the impact of of the COVID. And it's something, as an institution, we're going through with each of the clients. But it's it's just that in the face of how how burdensome this whole COVID has been, and really, the the financial effect on so many different things. I mean, pretty clear. And and I appreciate the conservative approach taking in your projections. That's it.
So it sounds to me, Mr. Mayor, like we're maybe getting close to the bottom of our agenda.
That's what it sounds to me as well. Is there anything else to bring forward here, folks? I think we we are at the end of the agenda. And if that is the case. Hearing nothing else coming forward, I would look for a City Council motion to adjourn this concurrent meeting with the Port Authority. Maybe I was too abstract here. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Martin? Or second, Martin?
We got a motion by Councilmember Carter and a second by Councilmember Martin to adjourn the City Council portion of this concurrent meeting. Ms. Lane?
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson, Nelson.
Aye.
Bussie.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Counsel is adjourned. Mr. President.
For a similar mo, I would look for a similar motion for the Port Authority.
So moved.
Peterson.
Second.
Hunt. Okay, Bussie.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Hunt.
Aye.
Keller. He's on, but he's muted. Luns. Rob, I just unmuted you. Luns.
Aye.
Thank you. Peterson.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
We are officially adjourned. Thank you much to the the Port Authority for spending time with us at the Council this evening. And thanks to staff, as always, for the outstanding work. Shane, well done. Jason, thank you very much. Julie, and very nicely done running the show over here. And Becky as well, thank you so very much. Well done to all the staff. And I see our friends from SIC are still on board. So Marty, you didn't have to stick it out with us, but we're glad you did. So thanks for being here.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Good job.